He said he was too new.
Okay, you're set.
Okay, we are, uh, the Board of Appeals, this is our business meeting, we'll open this meeting, uh, for Tuesday, October 2nd, 2012. I don't need to read the, uh, all that, that's fine, right?
Um, you wanna read the...
We'll conduct this meeting?
Yep.
Okay. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and other copies available from the clerk at this meeting. Do I have to mention that this is being recorded? I don't have the appropriate...
That's okay.
Yeah, well, this is being recorded, right?
Yeah, it's the DVD.
Alright, good, thank you. Alright, let's start with the finance report, Patty.
Okay. So, the first page is the town accountant's printout with, it says munis on the top.
Uh huh.
And this is ending August thirty-first, and then if you look at my spreadsheet, that's where it balances. Um, so actually, it's the first time, if you look at the second page of that revolving account, it's, the fees are a lot higher so far. That's good. Um, the next page is the expense line item that we have now. So, this will be, this is eight sixty, and this will be for phone, two hundred for supplies, and then the postage that we put in postage meter. That's about what we use. Any air with John, I think we use a little, maybe a little bit more, but, so I am gonna create a spreadsheet that will be with your packet every month to go along with the revolving spreadsheet, so it'll be two.
Uh huh.
Um, the next item is, it's a, it's just a sales order from Boston Systems, which is basically a quote for the office computer, um, and what he needs is just, you're gonna be getting an invoice for this after the fact and have to sign it after, but they need, um, Mary needs a motion to order the office computer per the quote from Boston Systems, um, and the date, and I put a little...
I'd like to make a motion to order office computer per quote from Boston Systems and Solutions dated September nineteenth, twenty twelve, funds expended from revolving, number five dash three-two-zero-four-one.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? It's unanimous.
Paul needs to sign the bottom of them. So I will scan that and send that to Boston Systems so they can just order, and then we'll have the final number.
This is so you can, your, basically your computer is so obsolete now, you can't do pictometry, etc.
I can't open, I can't, it won't update anything either.
Yeah, yeah, it's just maxed out.
It'll be anything. Um, okay, the next item, okay, so, that warrant we already voted on, the C, the training classes. So, um, I believe Paul's going?
Correct.
Gina, thirty. Sher, um, are you going?
I think I've been.
You've been, so are you all set?
Yeah.
Okay. Dave? Dave?
We'll take really good notes for you, alright?
Put me down.
Yeah, good.
Yes? Okay.
Are you sure you wanna go?
So, I need a motion.
Wait, I'll go, eleven fourteen. Eleven fourteen?
It's the day after the next meeting, the night after the next meeting.
Oh.
November fourteenth at seven, and that's at Merrimack Valley Planning Office.
You're gonna send us out the, uh...
I'm gonna register you.
Nope.
Which is right downtown here, well, it's easy to find. Yeah, it's quick to get to.
What time does this start?
Seven, so it's seven. Okay, so, that, and I need a motion for that?
Someone, I need a motion for the, uh, the Citizens Planning Training Course Planner.
Yeah, just to, you gotta total that, Dave. Thirty, thirty per board member.
So, motion for a hundred and twenty dollars.
I'd like to make a motion for four board members in the amount of thirty dollars each, total of a hundred and twenty, to attend the Citizens Planning, uh, Planner Training Course at Merrimack Valley Planning Offices on November fourteenth.
You want me to second that?
Second.
Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous.
Is Jeff gonna feel left out?
Probably. He can pay his own way now.
He's gonna be crushed.
Just let me know when you... Send that back around?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Is that it for finance? Hmm, okay. And, yes. Minutes that I emailed out on September seventeenth, oh Paul, I was supposed to print those to you.
It's alright, I got it on my, on my computer, yep.
Okay. So, we need a motion?
Need a motion?
Motion, yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from, ba-ba-ba-ba-ba, September fourth, two thousand twelve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Unanimous.
Pictionary and FYI, Patty?
Huh?
So, your Pictionary does just an FYI.
Yeah, um, this is an email from Gerard at Merrimack Valley Planning. This is a pictometry class for the new, the new version. Um, I'm going Thursday from two to four. They're having another class on the twenty-fifth, but they're, they're both full, 'cause this is what they're gonna be using, so it's an online version of it, but they only have so many login and login, like, it wouldn't be before...
Login users at a time?
It's just for staff, yeah.
Yeah.
So, actually, if I'm on it and Howard in Plannings, I can't go on it until he gets off of it, so, kinda stinks in that way, because now it's on my desktop and it's on the server, so it's a little different. So I'm doing that, um, Thursday, and I don't believe we have to pay for that, I believe it's part of the, when we purchased the, the new aerial, um, package, planning board.
How long's it gonna take to get your, uh, your new computer?
Um, he said if we had that by tonight, then by the twenty-second, so, okay, um, Building Inspector Correspondence, um, ninety-seven Tenny, and they've picked up an application, I re-went through what they needed, so they'll be coming in with that application, I don't have that yet. Um, Four Pine Needle Lane is one of the new applications for next month. A reduction of the setback, fifty percent for the accessory building bylaw.
Uh huh.
For a cabana. Cool cabana. Um, the next is just informational, it's a notice of intent from Conservation for five hardy terrace.
We got, uh, Tenny, Tenny is a, uh, vehicle repair shop, right?
Yes, it's actually already there.
Okay.
So, the owner evidently didn't realize he needed a special permit for motor vehicle repair.
Yeah, okay.
So, they have to come in and file.
And then Pine Needle, Cool Cabana, yep.
And then what's not, um, on here?
One seventy-two West Penn.
Oh, and I stuck that in there, yes, at the last minute, that just came in today, so I got that done today, and so there'll be, Pine Needle will be the first hearing, and that will be the second hearing for November thirteenth.
Yep, yep.
And, where are we? Okay, the next item is an email from Copeland and Page about revisions to the Permit Extension Act. We probably have a couple emails before this. I'm just gonna look at it. Um, the next is a memo from the town administrator about the townwide remote participation policy. So this is, if you go to page two, it says minimum requirements for remote participation, so I, I thought this would be if you didn't have a quorum, you can have someone call in if you have the speakerphone and have a quorum, but it says that a quorum of the body, including the chair, or the, in the chair's absence, the person authorized to chair the meeting shall be physically present at the meeting location. I checked with, um, the selectman's office, so you have to have a physical quorum to use remote participation, which, I don't know, to me, kinda defeats the purpose.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure.
I mean, Jeff could call from China if he really wanted to be here, and, but he still doesn't help you meet...
Super majority or something like that.
Yeah, it doesn't, it's kind of, just if someone can't make a meeting, uh, but it's not gonna help us when we have a situation that we need a quorum, unfortunately. Um, and then it, it just explained on the next page that the chairman makes the determination whether it will be used or not, so that's completely in the chairman's, um, purview.
Yep.
The last thing is...
Can I, can I go back one minute?
Yeah.
We got Pine Needle?
Yep.
Uh, we have Tenny?
Yep.
And then, I'm, I'm confused as to what is this hardy terrace, five hardy terrace?
That's just a notice of intent.
Okay, thank you.
That's just something Conservation, um, there, and what I did was Steve needed to know if we had any comments on it, and I just looked at it, and, um, they were moving, removing an existing house, um, replacing it with a, a house with a smaller footprint.
Mm-hmm.
So they're within the setback, so it...
Alright.
Wouldn't have anything to do with us.
Okay, good.
In that, in that fact.
Excellent, thank you.
And the last thing, um, this came from the town planner, it's the project with Georgetown Park and Rec. This is the small version of the plan that they have, only have one, I have a huge plan downstairs in the office, um, and he's looking for comments by October eleventh, and I just looked at it, 'cause I don't have an electronic copy to get you, when I, when Howard gets that, I'll get that to you. Um, this is a combination of three lots, if you look on that second page, it says Georgetown Park and Rec's working for the destruction of the East Main Street rec fields, and that says Phase one and two, I highlighted it, it's, it's clipped to the back of your agenda, that sheet. Like that, yeah.
So they're making the, behind the New Life Church is a park?
Right behind the New Life Church, there's a road there, I mean, I think it's an easement or something, um, so behind there. Um, one of the lots, map sixteen lot ninety-two D, completely within the flood plain, and that's a zoning, um, according to the Building Inspector, they would have to come to us for flood plain. The only thing is, in looking at this, it's a little confusing, and I have to get some information from Howard, because the lot they have outlined on the front of this plan does not match the lots that they're referencing here, I think it's just, one lot seems to be left out, and there is no flood plain delineation sheet in this set of plans.
So that be our comments that you wanna submit?
So I can just, if you, um, want me to just let Howard know that we need, um, a plan that shows delineation of the flood plain...
Mm-hmm.
On the lots.
Anything else, you think?
Oh, I think that's fine.
And I mean, we can put it, we can move it to put it on the next agenda?
Sure.
Um, 'cause I know Jeff wanted to look at it, too.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure he does.
So, um, you want me to just let Howard know that, and then, and put it on for the next agenda?
Absolutely.
Cool.
And if we could get those, an electronic copy would be great.
Yes, I'm waiting for Howard, he doesn't even have them.
Okay.
So this is kinda, it's really early, but they're in the office, if you wanna look them, they're really hard to read, they're really light, and there's, I think they just, it's kind of a draft version or something. And...
I think that's it.
Then these, distribution, this is for next month, so there's, both of them are in there, and Jeff's gonna mail to them.
Alright, can I go ahead and, can we close this meeting?
Yeah.
Yep. Do I need, we need a motion to do that, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to close the business meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to close the, uh, business meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, good. Um, do we need a break, ladies and gentlemen, before, can we kick off this, uh, first hearing? Since we'll stay right on schedule?
Yeah, it's fine. Okay. Paul, you wanna come up? Sure.
Good evening, my name is Brian Murray from Millennium Engineering.
Should I, yeah, can I open it first?
Yeah.
Sorry.
We need to open the hearing.
Yes, I'd like to open the, uh, first hearing of the evening for, uh, where are we?
Six Norino.
Six Norino Way, um...
Do you want me to read it?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, you want me to do that part? Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it.
Oh.
I'm good.
Thea, I meant thea.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll read the, uh, you can read the, the legal notice, yes, absolutely, thank you. Uh, the Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter forty-eight of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rule of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and other copies available from the clerk at this meeting. I'd also like to mention this proceeding is being tape-recorded. Um, the members today are going to be, yeah, thank you very much Sharon Freeman, Gina Tebow, David Kapnis, and myself, and, uh, we're gonna start by just reading the, uh, the advertisement in the, in the paper.
Public hearing, Six Norino Way, October second, twenty twelve, location Georgetown Hall, third floor, seven thirty PM. Applications have been made by Owners No Rail Properties LLC and Ran Realty LLC, PO Box three ninety-nine Georgetown, Mass., and applicant Mirror Company, Inc., for a special permit to construction four thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot addition, which will increase the existing equipment maintenance and repair facility in the water resources district under MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section nine, and the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapters one sixty-five, Sections twenty-nine through thirty-eight. The applicant also requires a special permit for storage maintenance of vehicles defined in the bylaw as a transport terminal, yards for structure for the storage and/or servicing of two or more vehicles per MGL forty-eight, Section nine, and Georgetown bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five dash nine, eleven A, point three, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine. The premises affected are Six Norino Way, assessors map fifteen, lot fifty F, and Seven Patriot Lane, map fifteen, lot fifty E, in the one B District, ZBA File Number thirteen dash oh four.
Thank you. Um, I wanna go ahead and read this correspondence, if that's okay, 'cause it is pertinent to what these guys are gonna present to us about the, uh, fire chief. Can you, sir, do you read that one for me?
I can. New correspondence from Al Beardsley, Saturday, September fifteenth, two thousand twelve, Patty Petteri, Russ Meyer, regarding mirror facility upgrade. Patty, this is a response to the plans for mirror, with the amount of potentially hazardous materials being added to the storage, the fire department makes the following requests: establishing, establishing of a containment area in the storage areas with the ability to contain a spill from one of these drums equal to one hundred and twenty-five percent of a single container. Number two, specified area for storing any hazmat cleanup items such as absorbent pads, pigs, spill mats, etc. Other than these two items, we're okay with everything listed. Uh, and then there's a note to see revised.
And there's a second correspondent?
Uh, this correspondence dated September twenty-sixth, two thousand twelve, addressed to, um, Paul and the members of the board. In response to design review comments provided by Fire Chief Beardsley, we have revised the proposed building addition floor plan to incorporate a hazardous material storage room. Attached please find one full-size print, two-by-three, and fifteen reduced prints, eleven-by-seventeen of the revised four floor plan for the board's review. If you have any questions in this submittal, please feel free to call our office, nine seven eight four six three eight nine eight zero sincerely, Millennium Engineering Incorporated, Eric Boterman, P.E., Principal. And it's copied to the Mirror Company.
And that, that revised plan went out to all the water res, if you look at the back of the water resource application, the fire chief has those waste물 in there and all his other apartments.
Thank you. Uh, go ahead, guys.
Okay, thank you. Uh, good evening, my name is Brian Murray from Millennium Engineering, uh, with me tonight is Lenny Mirror from Mirror Company. Um, as you are aware, we're here, uh, seeking approval, uh, for a special permit, and also the, um, due to the location of the property is within a wetland resource district, so we're looking for that approval as well from the board on it. A, a brief summary of the proposed improvements on this, uh, we're looking to do a four thousand eight hundred and fifty square foot addition, that addition is comprised of two pieces. I'm just gonna get up to the board here and show you, there's a section in the back of the existing building right here, that's approximately three thousand nine hundred square feet, and there's another addition along the side of the building over here, that's approximately nine hundred and fifty square feet. The reason for these improvements is, uh, Mirror Company would like to improve their operation and maintenance within the facility on it. Currently, their garage bays are undersized for some of the equipment they have out there, um, their storage is lacking within the, the facilities, they would like to, uh, uh, better handle, uh, their equipment and, uh, utility components that are used during construction, and, uh, have them within a, a safe, uh, clean storage area. In addition to the, uh, in addition to the addition, um, there are also some, uh, site improvements that are, that are gonna be required, and will also require us to go to the planning board and the Conservation Commission. Uh, we believe those, uh, um, two boards, uh, will be focusing on drainage and site improvements and, and whatnot, uh, associated with it. If you have read the narrative within our submittal on it, there is discussion about some hazardous materials that will be stored, uh, within the site. They are currently stored on the site, uh, as part of their current operations here, uh, we've listed the materials, uh, within the narrative on it, and they are primarily related to vehicle maintenance, they're primarily oils, um, the, they'll also be stored in there are, um, materials used to, uh, uh, clean up a spill on it, absorbent pads, or whatever else is needed on it. Just for the board's information, uh, Mirror Company is, uh, contracting with Safety Clean, which is a company that, um, uh, picks up hazardous materials, uh, and deliver it to a safe, um, landfill on it. They are also an emergency first responder on it, too. If needed, if in the case there was a spill of hazardous materials, uh, they would be the first responder. Again, the, the, we, I, I don't wanna say that we are gonna be storing a lot of hazardous materials here, these are just typical materials that are, are used in the, uh, construction maintenance business, oils, greases, and whatnot. In essence, that, that's what we're looking here for, we're looking for approval, uh, on two items, the, the water resource district and the special permit. Uh, Lenny, do you have any comments you would like to add to that, or?
Nope, that pretty much describes it, uh, the oils are like mostly engine oil for our trucks and hydraulic oil for heavy equipment. When we change oil, we have the waste oil stored on the site, and we bought a heater to heat our shop using that waste oil, so we use it right up on site. We used to have it hauled away, but now we just use it for our heater, and, um, then on a smaller level, this container's, uh, you know, uh, other shop equipment that we use, cleaners, degreasers, but, yeah, predominantly it's engine oil, hydraulic oil. And, uh, Safety Clean doesn't bring it to a landfill, they, uh, recycle it. It's a company in Salisbury that picks it up, they're a licensed carrier for that.
Will there be much of an increase in what you're currently doing now versus what you anticipate doing?
Oh, there's no increase, it's the same, actually. Right now, um, it's, that addition is for warehouse to store everything from rakes and shovels to generators and chainsaws, and, uh, we now do a lot, we used to do just underground utilities, now we do overhead utilities for Comcast, so we store everything from amplifiers and connectors, pole bends, things of that nature, and as the company grew over the years, we've been there since nineteen eighty-six, what we would do is we'd just add a box trail and then another box trail, and now we got about seven or eight box trails on the site, scattered throughout the yard. What we wanna do is get rid of all those box trails, put everything on the one roof, it's, it's unsightly, first of all, but it's also unwieldy, it's hard to keep track of inventory when box trailers are hundreds of feet in the backyard, so, uh, everything stays exactly the same. There's actually no addition, uh, there's no additional oils or greases or anything like that, it's the same use, we just wanna put it under one roof.
Basically, right, basically everything's gonna be consolidated in one spot, that all the miscellaneous trailers are going, are going away?
Yeah, we wanna get rid of those trailers, it's hard to inventory, it's hard to, you know, we can't even lock them anymore, the doors get dilapidated, so, um, construction workers being, construction workers are not the neatest people in the world, and they go in and out of the trail, stuff gets lost and mishandled. We wanna put it under one roof so it's inventoried and controlled a lot better.
Let me interrupt for one second, Patty, um, this is two separate hearings, correct? Or can we, since there's sort of combined interest, I mean, really, they're applying for one thing, but the fact it's in a water resource, can we, can we vote? Can we have two motions on that and just continue with one hearing?
Yes.
Alright. Questions, comments?
So, the, for the hazmat storage room, you added that in, but really, if there was any spills, it would happen within your building, right? There's really nothing that you do outside of the building? Okay.
That is true.
Okay.
Uh, just a, a point of interest of, uh, what's your septic system now? I realize you're gonna, are you gonna expand your septic system, or just, is it defunct and you needed a new septic system?
It's actually defunct.
Yeah, it's defunct, and it's gonna be, there's a replacement, we're currently, we just got through with the Board of Health...
Yeah.
...on it, uh, and it's for a new field, a new septic field.
And that's unrelated to, I guess you have another system that will, that is able to contain sort of, uh, oil runoff, and I guess that would be out, external drainage?
Yes.
The container that's a separator and all that stuff, that's already, you've had that before, or?
No.
Well, the, the floor drains go to a tank that's, um, on the plan, on the, if you're looking at the front of the building to the left side, um, there's a tank there that collects all the water that, that, uh, goes in the floor drain of that shop area, that's been there since nineteen eighty-six, and that's, of course, separate from the septic system...
Right, right, yes.
...of the building, 'cause the septic has to handle, obviously, the septic from the offices.
So that system's already in place and it's functioning?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Uh, and I guess you're gonna put a driveway around the north side now? Is that how that works? There'll be, I'm just wondering what that impact, obviously, the, the concept that you're cleaning up the back, the back, and eliminating some of the trailers and things like that is, is great, so now you're gonna, while you're doing this work, you're gonna have the ability to circle around the whole building, which you couldn't do before?
No, we can circle around it now.
Oh, you can?
Oh, yeah.
There's, there's a fence or something there, though, right now?
With a gate, though, there's a gate on both sides of the buildings, on the...
For your backyard?
Yes.
Yeah, I was snooping around today.
Okay, that's fine, but yeah, there's a gate on the right side that we predominantly use, but there's also a gate on the left side that we occasionally use.
Okay.
And we wanna use that one on the left side so we can make a loading, right now, we don't have a loading dock, when stuff comes in on a truck, and it comes in every day, we have to use, put forks on the front of a backhoe and...
Yeah, yeah.
Try to get it out that way, we wanna build a real loading dock on the north side, yeah, you, the north side, you're right, um, where a tractor could pull in on that left side and then back into the loading dock, which is right here.
Not very accessible right now.
Oh, clearly need to clean it out, yeah.
You drove around it, you know?
Yeah, except there was a gate, so I had to turn around.
Ah, yeah.
Prius.
Uh, I, I guess at this, if there's no comment at this point, is there any from the audience that would like to, alright, if you could come up to the podium and, and tell us who you are and, and address the board specifically?
Just saying.
That'd be the best thing to do.
Okay. And your name?
Patricia DePietro, fifteen Longview Way. Um, just a couple of concerns, I'm fairly new to the Georgetown area, and, um, Longview Way is sort of behind the area of this establishment, and, um, I heard a couple of things, I was concerned on, on a couple of levels, one was because of the water, and it's so close to the water... One was because of the water, and it's so close to the water supply. I understand that things are still contained and that you have many, many guidelines that you need to meet, and I have no reason to believe that you won't follow all of the requirements. I have no reason to believe that you wouldn't go above and beyond what you were required to do. But my concern is, what if there were, what if there are additional hazards that we need to look at? What if there is something that isn't being done, that we don't know about today, and we'll see those negative results in, you know, in five years or 10 years or whatever? Additionally, I hear that you're trying, you're going to expand for a storage-
You're gonna address your comments to us and that to them?
I hear also that the expansion is, the plan for the expansion is to store for storage. If the plan to expand is for storage, then where will the maintenance occur? And will that still, will that allow for more debris and more hazardous waste? These are purely questions, so I guess I'm asking you to help me understand. And as far as the loading dock on the backside of the property, that's practically in my backyard. So I can see that the noise level is barely tolerable now. I can imagine that that would be doubled or even tripled if everything is rooted in loaded and unloaded form from that side, so...
I'll let the gentleman address, they can get addressed just to whatever issue you have.
Yeah, I can. Yeah, the loading dock is, on the north side of the property. Currently, a truck will come in right here. Currently, a truck will come in on the south side of the property and a backhoe, like I said, will get a set of forks and unload. This is paved, this area here, where it says edge of pavement, and that's where we'll currently unload it. The loading dock here is, I don't know, 50 feet away, 60 foot?
Yeah, the house is right up in here.
Yeah, but there shouldn't be any, if you're hearing noise now, it's not gonna be any different than when a truck is here. I mean, currently, we already have trucks traveling around the building.
Yeah, but of course it's gonna be more, because it's gonna be closer than further away.
Well, 65 feet, plus it's gonna be quieter, because now we don't need to run a loader or a backhoe to unload the truck. A truck will back in there and shut off, and we can unload it with a dolly instead of a motorized vehicle. So it'll actually be less noise, not more noise, when we have a loading dock. As far as the debris and the oils go, I think the Water Resource District is in the back here. This is where we currently store our box trails that I mentioned earlier. So right now, I don't think you can see it, Mr. DePietro, but we currently store the, we currently store the trails along the perimeter of the property, so that we can use the middle of it for parking vehicles. So right now, when we need couplings or signs or safety devices from a trailer here, we have to drive from here to here to get it. If we put it in our warehouse, we no longer have to do that. That's our biggest source of inconvenience and inefficiency, especially in the wintertime. We have to plow this whole area just to get to a trailer. So if I need a road sign that says merge right, it's in a trailer in this part of the property, we have to drive from here to here to get it. We wanna put it under one roof, it's inefficient, it's wasteful, stuff gets lost and broken when it's out in a box trailer. We can better inventory it over here, it'll actually make it more efficient, more ecologically sound, because we won't be, won't have to do that anymore, won't need as much lighting, we won't need to drive back here as much. We won't have to plow these out every snowstorm just to get access to them. We already plowed this area here, once we do that, we already have access to it. So I think it'll result in less noise. I mean, I can't promise you we're gonna be quiet, we're a construction company, it's an early morning business. You know, I got trucks starting up at 6:00 AM, I apologize, but I'm sorry, nothing I can do about it. And trucks are, you know, diesels, they're loud, there's nothing I can do. We've been there since 1986 doing this, before there was a single house up on this hill. So I can't change that, I apologize for that, but we think this will actually make it a lot quieter. Because the other thing it'll do, it'll put these things inside of a building, instead of having machines, trucks and personnel driving to these remote box trails to fetch them. And you had another question, too? Was there something else?
Yeah, well, the statement was that you needed the building to do maintenance, but no maintenance is being done in the building.
Oh, no, we've been doing maintenance since day one, where it says garage. There's three drive-through doors there right now, that have been there since day one, that stays the same. There'll still be three drive-through doors.
This is actually a better plan, if you wanna look at it.
So that garage doesn't change, it stays right where it is. That's why I said the amount of oils doesn't change. The diesel fuel tank that's the announcement stays there, it's a 5,000 gallon tank, it'll always be a 5,000 gallon tank. And the floor drains go to the existing system for the floor drains. That all stays the same, nothing in that regard changes.
We just found out about this last night, so...
Yeah.
Sure, understood.
We're just trying to understand the impact of, you know, what we're already experiencing and, you know, it's gonna continue, I mean, I still...
Yeah, I think it'll be quieter and less impactful, but, you know, I'm not gonna lie, I'm not gonna say that, you know, we're not gonna make noise anymore, like I said, it's an early morning business and trucks are loud.
And as I said, that's not the ask, I understand, I didn't know that when we purchased the property, but... And the noise level is tolerable at best on some days. I can't imagine it getting much worse. To top it off, it would, you know, depending upon the result, whether it's more noisy or not, and, you know, I respectfully understand that you think it's gonna be less noisy, I think it's gonna be more noisy. That, what would that do to, if we decided to resell our house? The house would be less appealing to people who wanted to move to the area for the same reasons that my husband and I decided to move to this area, because of, you know, of the area, the tranquility, the conservation land, all of those things. And as I said, and clearly, as you pointed out, the loading dock that you plan to build is literally right in my backyard. So I have to say that, you know, I would respectfully ask that the record reflects that at least we oppose this proposition.
I, my understanding, after reading through this, going to the site, I think their intention is to make things better, not to make them worse.
And I appreciate that.
And I don't think they're even trying to expand, I think they're trying to be more efficient, be more concentrated, get everything into one center location, which is going to, in the long run, be much better for you guys. And you did mention whether, what are we to do if they, if there's other activities there that we don't know about? If there's, well, that's something that the people that are involved in that, it's the building inspector that we need to communicate, he needs to understand that. He's the enforcement agent for that kind of thing. So if you have a sense that something is out of whack, that's the person you would talk to about that. He's the right agent to deal with that. So I think, hopefully, I think, aside from the construction phase, which will obviously, won't be overly loud when they put up these types of buildings, it's pretty efficient and, you know, gets done quickly.
I understand.
Are you trying to get this done before the snow flies? It doesn't matter, you dig all year round.
I'd be getting a permit before this.
They gotta go to planning, site planning, we do, so they might be there for a year.
Yeah, we have a long permitting process in front of us.
That would be another good meeting to go to, to see with the planning board, and they're much more into the actually activities on the site and that sort of thing.
How many trucks are we talking of there currently?
This whole fleet has about 280 pieces of equipment, that includes every car, every truck, every backhoe. We only keep a small percentage of them here. We picked up contracts from Verizon International Group that requires a lot of work in Boston, Worcester, in the South Shore. So we now have remote yards where we park a lot of the trucks. So we're actually gonna hopefully have fewer trucks here, but, you know, there'll always be some. But the whole fleet, to answer your question, maybe 100 trucks and a fleet of 280 pieces altogether.
And all the repair work is done through this one truck?
No, no, like I said, we have those other locations, Boston, Worcester, Taunton, Woburn, where we also do some of the repairs.
Okay, any other comments from the audience? Sure, come on up and let us know who you are.
Sure. Jason Hellman, 12 Longview Way. I would also like to reiterate the noise concern that I have, not only on the early 6:00 AM, but at the end of the day to the 10:00, 10:00 PM, where you can hear trucks banging their tailgates out, which has gotta be in a clear noise violation of when, then that noise just radiates right back up Longview Way. And when your kids are trying to sleep, it gets annoying. I can only imagine unloading at a loading dock when they're coming back from their construction day, and this is gonna be a great concern of mine, where you may use a fork truck, but a fork truck noise is gonna radiate right up there, and what time they're gonna be allowed to unload at that dock?
Yeah, the loading dock has no impact on tailgates. Tailgates are for dump trucks, they dump dirt, debris in a pile on the, well, that's north, so the eastern part of the property way out and back. That stays the same, the loading dock is for boxes of goods being delivered on a tractor trailer or a box truck. Everything from tools and supplies to pipe, so that stays the same. The banging from the tailgate, yeah, that does happen, it is loud. That's for dirt, but the loading dock has absolutely nothing to do with that. Dirt doesn't get dumped on the loading dock.
I have a question that might clear it up. For the loading dock, the hours, I mean, typical loading dock hours are what?
We open at 7:00 AM for deliveries, we close at 5:00 PM for deliveries. We don't get deliveries at 10 o'clock at night, no company delivers at that hour.
It'd be between 7:00 and 5:00 where the loading dock would have access, just...
But if it's a maintenance facility and they're coming back from the end of day of construction, that means they're not gonna unload after 5:00?
No, no, that's a dump truck.
No, no, I'm saying, construction vehicles that load up signs, and they come back at the end of the day, they're not gonna open their doors, use the loading dock area for anything after 5:00?
They'll use it for tools and supplies, but not tailgate banging.
Now you'll have the beeping of the backing up, I mean, the noise doesn't go away, that's...
Oh, no, when a truck backs up, it, no matter where it is on that site, it'll make a backup alarm, absolutely.
Yeah, the biggest issue here is obviously noise, and I think there's, again, I think the building inspector would be addressing a noise ordinance type thing. If you guys have a... No?
There is no noise ordinance by law, in our bylaws.
When?
Believe it or not.
Oh, currently?
I actually checked because I had a noise issue. And I spoke to police station, and Lieutenant Cumbo let me know that there are no, it's kind of a reasonable, whatever's reasonable, like 3:00 in the morning isn't reasonable?
Right, right.
Playing in a band outside at 3:00 in the morning?
Yep, yep.
That's not reasonable. So it's actually, there's no noise by law. Probably should be, but there's not, right now.
Yeah, the, this board is addressing specifically the building in an industrial area, because it's in a water resource area, et cetera. Clearly, we understand what you're saying. I would suggest, when it comes to the site planning and things like that, hours of operation, we can't even define that right now, but perhaps a planning board can. So they may be able to attach conditions as it impacts the community. We're just addressing the building itself.
And the water issues?
Well, water resource, we, you know, we have to decide as a board whether, if they followed all the rules necessary to be granted a special permit. That's, you know, we will review that, which we have, and they've given us the documentation that our codes require to either grant or deny this special permit. But certainly, the whole location of where you guys are versus where they are, it's very difficult, because they're, they couldn't be in a better spot, it's totally industrial. I mean, it's really where they belong, that's where they belong, that's where they should be. So it's all in the record, and I would recommend you go to the next meeting that they have.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
How do we know, I guess, that's the, I mean, we didn't know about this, right?
You should've gotten a notice, you're on the abutters list.
I can, that was a question, a general question that I had. I wanted to know who is responsible for notifying anyone. As I said, I knew to the neighborhood, and if I was not walking my dog and met one of my neighbors who I had not known before, she said, "Did you hear about this?" And I said, "No, I had no idea," and she said, "Funny, you should say that." Everyone else I asked didn't know about it either.
Patricia DePietro, 15 Longview Way.
And I guess I wanna know, how was the correspondence distributed? I know, she put it in my mailbox after, but how was the correspondence delivered? My husband and I do have properties in other towns and other states, and normally...
This is what went to the post office?
Yeah, they get mails.
By certified mail?
Get mailed by regular mail, and this is what went to the post office, and you're right there.
Certified mail, isn't it?
Certified mail only to the owner and the applicant, regular mail to abutters.
Okay.
So this is the list.
I can say, a majority of the residents on Longview Way did not receive...
Well, it's a 300-foot radius, so, for example, this is the abutters list. So there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14 people.
But only, wait, but there's only 1, 2...
15 Longview, 9 Longview.
Five.
11, 7, and 13 Longview. Because what the assessor's office does is they do a 300-foot radius, a circle. And whatever hits, if it hits your lot, you're on the abutters list. If it doesn't, someone across the street on another number of Longview would not get a notice.
So, so is 15, is 15 Longview on you?
Yes, and it went, and I have the list that went to the post office.
So did you receive a notice?
I'm on 12 Longview.
He's not on the abutters list, 13 got one, 13.
So how do you know on the next?
It went to the post office.
Well, you're an abutter, so you should get a letter as well.
But we did, that's the thing.
Yeah, I mean, this is the challenge, I mean, so maybe they did go out, maybe the person missed that, whatever happened, I don't know, if this goes off the same way next time?
Is it posting newspaper, too?
It's also legal ads in the newspaper, too.
Many hearings are, in fact, all hearings are...
Well, just get the newspaper.
Yeah, it's...
Yeah, I mean, it's the mail, we put them in the mail, yeah.
They do, and when they go for site plan approval with the planning board, you'll, those abutters notices go out for that, too. I don't know why it went to the post office.
This is in the Georgetown, Georgetown record, yeah, so, yeah, you should definitely get a newspaper, because it's, there's really not a lot to look at in there, except for these.
And it was...
Yeah, it's public record, you can get a list.
Not a lot of news in Georgetown. Yeah.
So, I do have a question.
Yes, yes, absolutely.
On the plan, I'm just curious, can you explain why you selected this side as opposed to this side? I'm just curious, so, why the loading dock is here? Was this an option or wasn't it an option?
The fuel pumps, it's right here, where it says fuel tank.
Yep, I saw that.
And there's an apron that goes around it, and that's where our trucks fuel up. So we actually, this is the busiest part of the area, this is where, actually, this is the noisiest part. This is where trucks go in and out, they get their marching orders, the crews do, from this door, pretty much. And they get their repairs done, mostly in this area right here. And so, yeah, there's obviously utilities going from here to the lights, but there's also the fuel tank with the fuel going underground to here, so we, yeah, it really wouldn't be an option to put it on this side.
Is that all you land all the way up to Main Street, too?
Yeah, yeah, and this as well, yeah.
Any other questions or comments?
Can you explain what can it be covered loading area with that?
The loading dock would have a cover, so if a delivery comes while it's raining, it'll just have a cover over it. Where it says covered loading dock, Mr. DePietro, right there? Yeah, so that when a truck comes in and we're using a dolly to get it out, it's done by hand, it'll be covered if it's raining.
Just the loading dock's covered, so when the bags in is all still wide open?
Correct, yes, yeah. Just with the dotted lines.
As far as flow of traffic from the loading dock? Would you, are you gonna have, are you gonna have a flow? I guess, will it be coming around or will it be backing up, or?
Yeah, we think it'll come in on the left side of the, or the north side of the property, and then back into the loading dock.
Okay.
This way, swing back in, then out.
Okay.
I think overall, it's, in order to help to clean up the back area, which I happened to notice more, because I came, I looked at your place and I followed around to the other property where there's, was there a defunct pavement company there or something? Or they, there's a weird, is a vacant building, like you can see it from your... Or are they, there's a weird, is it fake a building, uh like you can see it from your storage area?
Oh, yes, it used to be high-tech hose.
Oh, okay.
It's for sale, that building's for sale?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it used to be high-tech hose a lot of years.
Well, I happened to, I was, I drove down that road, which is a dead end, and noticed all your stuff on the, on the top there, so I think that anything you guys can do to, to keep that organized, and, and get rid of the containers and all that is, would be great.
That's the intention, right, to get rid of those containers.
Yeah, I think that's fine, as, as far as the, the addition to the, the equipment maintenance, I, it's, it's negligible, almost to the point where you, you're just expanding the other space a little bit, I don't really see that there's a, a really a change in the usage at all. So I, that's my feeling, I think it's just gonna make things better over there.
I think it's a difficult situation, that there is residential, new resident, reasonably new residential that is, you know, and built alongside, and perhaps you weren't informed when you purchased it. You know, I, I think that's very unfortunate, you know. I think these guys are, are making an effort to clean up their property, clean up their site, um, and try and consolidate a little bit, 'cause they know, they, they, they know, for even from, not just from a business point, they know that, you know, it's not real pretty outside, having all these storage facilities all over the place. Uh, they're losing money by having to plow, and by not having to plow that every single snowstorm, you know, and that can happen at three, four, five in the morning, 'cause they know they gotta have it cleared out. You know, that's reducing a lot of the noise, it's reducing, you know, a lot of the lights that are flashing as well. Uh, you know, I think it's a, you know, it's a difficult position for you, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, I, as long as they abide by everything that is being mandated by law, by bylaw, at least from our board, and, but that's only the first step. Okay, um, you know, I think they're doing what they can do, you know, and it's just one of those, it's not the first time those situations have popped up, that, you know, somebody moves into his pla- place, and all of a sudden, like Georgetown fishing game, you know? Uh, new people moving in there don't understand that, that's a gun club. And they fire guns all day, you know, and, you know, they didn't know about it. I don't have any other questions.
I don't either.
I can hear those guns up on Bailey Lane.
I do think it's gonna make it, right now, it looks a little bit messy, I think this is gonna make it look better, and I think it's.
Do you wanna increase noise?
I really do.
I think if you want to ask that question.
I think by having everything internal, it's gonna create less traffic going out to the backyard, so. I feel bad, 'cause I always, I, I'm not trying to diminish your, you know, but.
I totally understand.
Yeah, I'm hopeful that it's gonna be quiet.
Looking good is half the battle, I, I understand cleaning, um, but my concern is. I still, um, in the medical field, I see tragedy from deterrants every single day. So, so I have issues with that, and um certainly the noise level.
Well, the reason why we're not talking too much about it is that everything's inside. If it was outside, it'd be a completely different story, and I'd be right on board with you, but everything's inside.
I got a question, though, because on here, is this gonna be new-built or existing?
Which part?
That part is new-built, that shaded area right there is right here.
So your building, what are you putting there?
That's just.
Extending the maintenance area in there.
The garage.
Yeah, so again, you're extending it up towards the houses with a bay right around here.
No, the bay's existing, it just makes the existing bay longer.
Yeah, allows for bigger trucks to get in here, they access this one.
Okay. Sure, make them vote.
Any other comments?
Uh, I would like to make a motion regarding the water, water resource district. The motion is to approve the water resource special permit of owners' no rail properties LLC Six Norino Way and Rand Realty LLC, Box three ninety-nine Georgetown, Mass., and applicant Mirror Company, Inc. For a special permit to construct the four thousand eight hundred square foot addition, which will increase the equipment maintenance and repair facility in the water resource district. For the property of Six Norino Way, assessors map fifteen, lot fifty F at, and Seven Patriot Lane, map fifteen, lot fifty E, in the IB district under MGL Chapter forty-eight, number nine, in the Georgetown zoning bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections twenty-nine through thirty-eight. The board found that the applicant proved that per zoning bylaw, water resource chapters one sixty-five, twenty-nine, the proposed addition for the equipment maintenance and repair facility will not result in degradation or potential degradation of any groundwater and of any surface water resources providing water supply to the town, including potential water supply to the town or any other town, namely Rowley, Newbury, or Groveland, and meets the Georgetown Water Resource Guidelines in the Georgetown Zoning Bylaws, Chapter one sixty-five, Sections twenty-nine through thirty-eight.
Someone like to second that?
I'll second.
Further discussion? As far as the water resource is concerned, I can only think that it's gonna be better by bringing everything into a, one particular building, with proper drainage on the floors and things like that.
And also by, you know, meeting Chief Beardsley's uh directives about containment as well.
Yep. Shall we vote?
And you said that the, the building was sprinkled, right?
It's fully sprinkled, yeah, and alarmed by the fire department.
Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. I think it's uh, certainly, we can disc, we'll, we'll make a motion for the transport terminal, which is, in essence, the expansion of, of the existing repair area of this, of this building. It's already existing, there's, I don't know, three bays or two bays, actually, I'm, yeah, looks like three bays. You're basically just extending those by a certain number of feet. Would you like to read that motion for me?
Motion to approve a special permit to owners' no rail properties LLC Six Norino Way and Rand Realty LLC, PO Box three ninety-nine Georgetown, Mass., and applicant Mirror Company, Inc., for a transport terminal per MGL forty-eight, Section nine, in Georgetown bylaw, Chapter one sixty-five dash nine, eleven, eight point three, seventy-eight, and seventy-nine, for the property of Six Nori- Norino Way, assessors map fifteen, lot fifty F, and Seven Patriot Lane, map fifteen, lot fifty E, in the one, one B, IB or one B, one B district?
IB.
IB, sorry about that. The board further found the applicant meets one sixty-five dash seventy-nine, A through D, being the requested use and alteration is essential or desirable to the public convenience and welfare, will not overload any public water or other municipal system, so as to unduly subject any areas to hazards affecting health, safety, or general welfare, will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, and will not cause an excess of that particular use, which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. The special permit shall have the following condition, the applicant shall apply to the planning board for site plan approval and conservation and Board of Health.
Someone to second?
Second.
Discussion?
Vote.
No, yeah, I think we can go ahead and vote, all those in favor?
Favor?
Aye. Against? No one. Unanimous again, Patty, thank you.
And, I just read the board.
Yes, the written decision of this hearing shall be filed with the town clerk fourteen days after the close of this meeting. There's also a twenty-day appeal period, is that in addition to the fourteen days, or from this period on?
Um, the fourteen, I have, we have fourteen days to write it, sign it, and then when Jan stamps it, when the town clerk stamps it, the twenty days starts after that.
Twenty-day appeal period.
So I'll get you a, I'll get you, do you want me to send it to Brian, the decision?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, I'll send you the decision with the registry instructions to report it. And um, but you can still file with site plan.
Absolutely.
Site plan with planning, I would, you know.
We're gonna be doing that shortly, yep.
Yeah, and then conservation for that little piece that, that, we're gonna, small piece in there.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
A motion to, uh, close this meeting?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to close this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.